Yeah, we should be good.
Welcome everybody to call me the order. September 23rd, 2021.
Very loud or not very loud?
Very loud.
Okay.
Thank you. Much. But for you, if you were all called.
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Brown.
Present.
Before I can move further.
Here.
Dr. Pratt.
Present.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
This part here.
Present.
This is for us.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Now, I would like to make a motion for approval of our agenda. Like to move that we kind of take away most of the agenda and just go to maybe even have one or two special comments in the members of the community, but that most of the other stuff we don't actually. Because it's a work session. So I propose that we. Do away with like four number comments or five comments. And. That's how I'm thinking. We want some good effects. We want to make comments in the. I think. Any other. The question I'm not comfortable with, you know, the software and wanting someone to do this. You just go to that one. Any more? Any other thoughts on that? I would that we change the agenda to work last, but it's a whole session. To. So basically skip six point O, go to seven point O, start eight point O, and then eleven point O. Any other questions? Well, I propose that we move comments and members of the community to six point O. So I'd say skip six point O. Nine and ten.
I have. I don't know. Can we just leave the community comments at the beginning of the meeting? To get that really. For you and your group sessions. All right. So in considering this, by the more further suggesters, we are amending our agenda to eliminate tougher things in work. Different than the comment, and at the appropriate locations, you will have comments submitted to the community. Is that what I'm doing?
Yes, ma'am, that's my opinion. I'd like to take Ms. White, the first person, because it's about the agenda. That she would like to have. Her charge to be in the six point O. So we continue to have six, seven, eight. Eleven.
So I'm going to keep. Not only I don't want to keep six point O and now one second, six point O and eight point O. So the members of the community's comments at the beginning or at the end to the touch of thirty.
We definitely want to turn the page.
Oh, yes, thank you, Doc.
And I would support you. All right, any other questions? Off, David, I'll. All right. All right, so. We are now for a process of community for comments for members of the communities. Please keep in mind that it's a limited comment in three minutes. Please save the main.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking in our gallery and in our chat, and at this time I do not see any hands raised. I'll remind any attendees and participants, if you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand in the attendees' space or make a comment in our chat box so that we can acknowledge you and give you your three minutes. There's nobody at this time with their hands raised or has made a comment to publicly speak.
Mr. Brown, I'm on my phone. How many people are there?
There is just one person in attendance online at this time.
Thank you. All right. So again, I remind you, we will have another opportunity in just a little bit. The open access comments. Words of the community again. Before we jump to our main topic here, we want to just quickly note to the community that through the emails, we are watching and aware of stressors and stressors regarding COVID and COVID testing, accessibility testing, the equity issues around testing. I know that Dr. Bassett is continuing to work hard and getting closer to the new top list with some other medical personnel that are briefly called. Also, I will offer here as you will, give us a quick update if you don't mind. I'm just aware of school testing, but I have also been reaching out to local pediatricians within the charitable area of the company at UVA last week. Through the years of the leading director of pediatric ethics there. So just as a reminder to families, if, we'll start with UVA, if you are in the UVA system, if you want and can reach out to your pediatrician. They planned a webinar of last week that there was testing, COVID testing going on from five to eight on Wednesday, Friday at the Battleville Local Pediatrician. Also, one that I spoke with said, you know, you call up and we're to achieve the child is symptomatic with your best to different men saying they have the testing. And now I've also seen teams in our pediatric ethics director's case or path. And, you know, everybody was feeling the path of in the demand of immediately tested. So we are thankful to that, everybody tested us that along those lines. Please continue to wear your mask. Your students and your friends and the families to wear your mask. Not just wear your mask, but wear it properly, because wearing it properly matters. And that's really just a protective sign. On behalf of all of our students, we want, in our school board, please, we need diligence and to keep others favored. And Dr. Bassett is going to pick up you on where we are with the food testing and anything else in my class.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Odie. I did have me Dave from the health department, and everything that Ms. Torres just said is correct. I do know that the UVA docs, because of the overwhelming number of patients, are trying to prioritize symptomatic children versus asymptomatic, keep sick children who have to be in the same spaces. So rather than just going with this better idea to call and make sure that they can see you at that time. We have a meeting tomorrow with the vendor that's been selected for Charleston City School Testing Ead. I don't know a lot about the process at this point, but we will have to meet tomorrow to see what some of the next steps are and to make sure this is still something that we feel is important or, well, we know it's important, but what we think is our best use of resources for Charleston City Schools. Some divisions are choosing not to do the full testing round because they're seeing it as an add-on to the day or taking up resources. And so we want to make sure that the resources, human and otherwise, will be utilized effectively. And hoping that we will receive some assistance, both financially and in human resources for the school testing, it won't be an extra task for our staff members, which that's the way it's been explained. So we want to make sure we're in it with them, that it's still the case. Dr. Jennifer Dallas at UVA has done a year in his job of a lot of different things that he's been doing. I've talked to him numerous times throughout the pandemic about various issues with COVID. He is trying to do more teams out in the community called strike teams. This is primarily UVA, and I think maybe some others too, who are doing this on their own time. They're still working their own schedules and then helping to set up testing at different sites. One was done last week at Jack Jewitt Middle School. We're doing one here at Charlottesville High School Thursday afternoon. We're going to start setting up for five. The actual testing event would be from six to seven thirty, and we'll be doing it somewhere around the opening of CO2. I realize all of us in here now have a school board meeting at five o'clock Thursday. But, but if it's short, and I know it can be, then we can all go downstairs and help with the testing when that is over. But, so all we're being asked to do is somebody to help with parking, just help with the logistical pieces of it. And Dr. Dallas again is trying to do this in different parts of the community. So this is the first time we've done it like this with Charlottesville, but I was told that I needed we would have the support, so hopefully we do it additional times as needed. So those are where we're doing some of the testing. Still, the thing we need done is vaccination, and Friday here at the high school will be the second vaccination for the group that we had, get their first vaccination on September 3rd. If you're any students or families that would like to get that first shot Friday here at Charlottesville High School. I asked Dave about a link, and I haven't heard back from the health department. If I get it while we're in this meeting, I will let you know again. But if someone would like to get that first shot by Friday, you can contact me at Beth.Bassett@CharlestonSchools.org. I will make sure that you get the information that you need for getting that first shot on Friday. Any questions?
I want to put a question about this. So reminding her again recently today regarding support to students who might be struggling with transportation to get to testing. Do we, are we trying to coordinate any, or are you having any resources to help, or where are we at with that?
There's no set program for that, but we have told families and we told doctors' offices that if they know of a family within Charlottesville City Schools who needs that support, if they let us know, then we will work with our social workers, our social emotional folks within our schools to do what we need to do about getting assistance for that. So there's no set to do this or do this, but let us know what you need, and we will work to make sure that that happens. I don't know whether some of the testing in the future outside of the full testing can be done during school hours. Again, this, the testing Thursday evening is by employees at UVA who are doing this on their own time. One of our parents, who's also a UVA pediatrician, Dr. Emily Wong, is sort of handling a lot of the logistics on this one with the doc, the Dallas, and planning all afternoon. But, so different doctors are trying to work on the strike team to get the testing out and out. So we'll try to do what we can, we just need to know what the need is.
Thank you. I appreciate your effort, I appreciate parent efforts. I think it never hurts to just be asking people. And what I started to do is to call people and ask, like, do you have any capacity to come in and help us in these schools? And that helps that we can continue to move forward with the school testing. Obviously, we don't want to add some more on to our own employees. I hope that that goes involved in the community resources to help support that testing. But I also feel we need more than that, you know, to keep, not just us, I mean, everybody, every school that has been, you know, that probably gets vaccinations to freeze for our younger kids. We need to have access to testing, and unfortunately, the resources, you know, were pivoted to vaccine support. You know, some, some of the, a lot of the vaccines, I think, probably was pivoted that way. And so there's some of those issues that we probably aren't even aware of, you know, where the vaccines have slowed and that's why I mean, the tests have slowed. And I just want to say thank you to everybody, and thank you again to you, and thank you board for all the discerning of that. But I feel like COVID, we need to speak to, you know, forefront and speak to the conversation open. So, thank you.
One other thing I thought about. With the hope that we will get the okay for the five through eleven, agents five through eleven to test in a couple weeks later this week or next month. The plan right now is that it will not be done through mid-school clinics like we did the H1A1, but will likely be done in hubs or on the weekends or something. I'm not sure, they may ask us to host as a hub, which if they do ask, I will say yes, because I know I will have volunteers to come help with that. But they have not, they were talking about this afternoon, and not 100% sure how they will do it. They're not thinking that we will line up all the kindergarten to give them the shots, which makes it hurt to think about doing it that way. But we will work on that. And questions will also ask about the boosters. Don't know what all the plans about are going to be, but we're certainly a player in being a part of however it is done. One question was asked, I've already heard before, but case to cover, has this question. You took Moderna, and we now have the Pfizer closer to being available for the boosters. Do not take the Pfizer if you had Moderna as your first and second shot. Wait till the Moderna information comes out, that was mentioned again a second. Any other questions?
I have a question COVID related, and I'm just putting it out there, because you're doing a whole lot. So this has been really your area, but when we're talking about the kids who are quarantined or out because of the COVID exposure. There's, I just didn't get any messages from people about sometimes if a whole class gets shut down and the students are available, they can be virtual, but I'm just trying to get an idea of the number of students who are not virtual but are quarantining, because it seems like that's a lot of disruption.
I don't know. I don't have enough on that. I will tell you, at all of Charlottesville City Schools, we've only had closed one class throughout the division. That class was closed for two weeks. It was not an outbreak in that class, but there were three separate cases that likely came from public exposures. There was nothing to say that exposures happened within that class. I can't tell you for sure whether it did or didn't. But we closed the class because most of the class have either been exposed or, or we had the three cases. That's the only class at Charlottesville City Schools that is closed. As far as the numbers quarantining, we're not quarantining as many or counting as many as close contacts at this point, because people are getting better about where to mask and where to approach it. So before we call someone a close contact, they have to be unmasked, they have to be less than three feet inside, and to have been together unmasked less than three feet for more than fifteen minutes, a few more typically. And we're working very hard to make sure those conditions do not happen in our classroom. So occasionally, we do have a person or two that needs quarantining, mainly because of public exposure at lunch, because that's where we would not have the masks on. But I can't say the number to a quarantine right now, but I do not think it is as high this week as maybe it was the week before last, when we were, still didn't even know we used to, probably, to mask. But we're, I mean, I keep, I know the ones who are quarantining because of school. You have to go find them, count them for you, but I just don't think there are too many right now, because we're doing a better job of telling other individuals.
Is there any way we could track that number or add it to our tracking?
We've talked about doing that, and to be honest, I haven't gotten it done. I think it's something that.
You're doing a lot.
Well, but it's information that people need to know, and we will get it done. I think from right this moment, tell you what that number is, but I can work to try to get that number right. Thank you. Welcome. There, here's.
I have a question. Regarding the class that you just spoke about. Did the teacher do virtual with those children for the two weeks?
Yes. Well, all but one day, the teacher was still one day, not COVID related.
So the per teacher is, if the tests begin and the entire class tests, quarantined, they will be allowed to do virtual in order that they not fall behind?
That was the plan for that class, and I can't tell you that 100% that would happen, depending on the teacher. If the teacher is ill, then we would have to come up with a different plan for that. But in this case, the teacher was, well, I could do the virtually with the students, so we would hopefully would be able to do that.
Are our students three feet or five feet apart in the classroom?
In the classrooms, the contact present distance is three feet. If you're outside of the, so six in some situations, but three to six. Inside is three feet, and we are trying to keep that distance at three feet. If we're not at three feet, we are masked.
Oh, thank you.
Good afternoon. A little bit about some shifts we're having to go through, if masks is properly, and there's some instances that is contributing to transmitting the virus. And I would say.
It depends on the age of the child and the reason for not wearing the mask. There's a difference in just not being able to tolerate the mask and not being willing to tolerate the mask. So.
We're not wearing the mask.
Not wearing, well, a lot of people, I've seen a lot of people protecting their chins throughout the pandemic. Teachers are just, and administrators are being vigilant about, and mindful about wearing the mask. And I know that we have had the face shields, they're also available, we could not switch masks, but rather than nothing. And if it's a willful not wearing the mask, then there could be just more repercussions to that.
Dr. Bassett, I have a question. You can refresh my memory. What are we doing to those students who are at home, you know, recovering from COVID, making sure that they cannot fall into time? What's the response from the teachers?
We've asked the teachers to prepare work for the students, and what we, one thing we need to look at is the child at home quarantined and asymptomatic so that they can continue doing work? Or are the students sick and not able to do the work? So we do ask the teachers to make sure that work is available, and if so, parents, you know, they want to come to the school to pick up the work, that we can work it out with the teacher, and we will do that.
So does the teacher, you know, contact the parents?
I don't know that we've actually said teacher contact parent or parent contact teacher, but we just need to make sure that they're working together. And some parents may not really want the kids to have work if they're sick or whatever else. We want to make sure it's available for any family who wants that work.
Any other questions, or comments?
I just had a comment, I spent some time pointing at Johnson Elementary School, and it's helping the kids. You know, they get out in the front car, probably, I mean, probably that's going to probably be the car. The door, I know that each piece of these kids, they were very diligent in putting their mask on before they got out of the car. And I know that this is not a, you know, a valid survey or anything, but just that, I know that the kids, they're going to be kids, but at least this morning, every kid that came out the car, they had the mask on. And I know as far as you watch the whole day, keep them on. These kids, they started off with them on, so.
Best majority are doing exactly what they need, and kids sometimes, occasionally I walk out into the hall, and oh my gosh, I don't have my mask, and I'll start puddling my face, but go wherever I'm going. I mean, it's, but I think most people that are trying to do what we need to do.
Thank you. This was a long, sorry, everybody, but. If that's coming up, so thank you. All right, moving on to the discussion. So here we are with our budget work session. So you will prepare the documents and. Evening, Madam Chair, this is the board, Dr. Odie. So the format for this topic, the meeting is basically, I'm going to provide you with some background information, a lot of the service, information you've seen before, but it's important that everyone is grounded in some of the foundational information before we lead into the real purpose of this discussion. So the information I'm going to share, it will take about ten minutes to kind of go through. And a lot of it will take, a lot of them will be familiar, and then we'll go into discussion. So the first slide that you should be looking at is just the recap.
Good evening, Black Knight, you're in the building, and power by the avenue. Close, please, start making your way to the front of the building. Again, all Black Knights in the building, if you need afternoon transportation, it's not black, please make your way to the front of the building. Have a terrific evening.
Thank you, Dr. I. So this first slide is what you saw back at your May retreat, and it just summarizes the different grants or awards, if you will, of the federal dollars. And it's my understanding that you're unable to project today in the UVA Center. So Leslie is projecting for the audience at home, and I did make sure everyone who's present does have a paper copy of the presentation. I am the second, yes, so. Yeah, and if it'll help, I'll do this one of these kind of point and things if we get through. Yeah, it's a little different format. We haven't had this before, but you know what, we're good in Charlottesville in adapting. If there's anything COVID has taught us, we're going to constantly exchange and we adapt. So. So this just shows you the three different awards, with the third award being the most significant, the $10 million. So that's just free information. The next slide, again, these are things you've seen before, I just want to go through them quickly. It talks about that large grant, the ARPA. Act in the US, ARPA, ARPA, that's your free funds. And that paragraph at the top talks about the intended uses of those funds. So I just wanted you to have that handy. In conjunction with that, with those funds, we publish our safe return to learn plan, which is available on our website. And then we also have our current and intended uses for those funds, which were largely tied to the FY22 budget development. But of course, that's all going to be subject to change in discussion as we go along over the next seven years. So this next slide, the good news and challenge slide. This is also something from the retreat, although I have updated the number to reflect the final transportation number that was settled on instead of the 600 and some odd thousand that we discussed at the retreat in May. You may recall the city manager had the counter proposal for 332,000 as a pilot program over two years, so that's reflected here. But again, the good news is, when the board was working on the fiscal year 22 budget, you knew the social, emotional work, and these were there, the academic learning laws, and the items that were put into the FY22 budget were all connected with things that the ARPA funds were intended to support. So that was good. Of course, the challenge is dealing with the non-recurring nature of those funds and how we manage a transition, if you will, to recurring funds during the next seven years. a transition, if you will, to recurring funds during the next seven years. The slide below that, the one that has the yellow and green box, it talks about city support for schools. And I think not a budget year goes by where we don't talk about the fact that the city funding is the foundation and the key to our success in the school vision. And this is true for every locality, depending on the matter, county or city. The local support is defined through the educational programs. And the messages in the yellow and green boxes were in almost every budget presentation we gave last year. Just important reminders about the significant impact that the team has had on our community and our school community and our students. And then the caution about the non-recurring revenues, that was in all of the presentations. So again, we're not dealing with anything we didn't see coming. And so it's just a matter of making good decisions as we move forward.
Last call, the Black Bus, students here in the building, you can be up front, but most carefully, last call, and by the Black Bus, have a great afternoon.
Okay, so the next slide is the one regarding the New River Commission on Sustainable School Funding. And this is just something that we like to include because it, that, the work that was done on that study that concluded in 2014, all of that work still holds true to this day with regard to the fact that, you know, what it takes to maintain and sustain our programs and respond to student needs is something in the order of people forming an official first year. That was what they had forecast or told the board within that work that the city, the New River Commission did back in 2014. I think it speaks to the qualities at work, but that's still something we refer to today, it still holds up. So the next slide, that says CCS budget and city appropriations against all materialists from prior presentations. This simply shows the average annual increase of the city appropriation for schools was, in fact, between 2.4 million and 4 million. An average of 2.3 million from 2015 to 2020. So that's, that's just for there, there to reference against that New River Commission projected revenue to 4 million. Now we're going to start to move into some new material. That was all just review. This next slide is one that you'll be very familiar because you just saw it at the council and board work session on September 15th. And the reason that this slide is in here, in particular, what's something that stood out for me is that it references a 5% increase in, a potential increase in the property tax rate to cover the 4.5 million dollar school operational increases. That's the 4.5 million that comes up at current discussions, the council. It's an area of concern. I did not, you know, note that that was going to be part of the presentation, I thought it was interesting, I know several of you were also intrigued. We're just going to put a pin in that for right now, and it'll come up when we get to our, when we get into the figure discussion. But I just wanted to include that slide because it certainly caught my attention, and I know we'll have some we'll look forward to better understanding what all, what all that means. So then the next slide is this one called Budget Ramps and Bridges. And I hope this is helpful, it may not be, but I'm working on things right tonight, and I'm just thinking. The first box shows the current federal non-recurring revenues. And this, this graphic is intended to represent how we have to split those, you know, potentially split that non-recurring revenue to recurring revenue to the extent that we maintain all of those programs and expenses as they are in FY22. So that first rectangle diagram is, you know, what I call flipping a ramp. Because what we talked about during the FY22 budget development process is the fact that because of the, the dollar value of funds that was coming into the federal government and the fact that it can extend out until the use of those funds can reach out to fiscal year 2025, although that last year you have to finish spending by September 30th, 2024, but that's still touching the fiscal year 2025 budget. There's an opportunity to use those funds to provide a ramp, if you will, for local revenues to recover and, and settle out of the goal of the time. Because one of the biggest challenges we all dealt with is that the FY22 budget development process, it's just the uncertainty of what, you know, the future holds, and I know the city feels that uncertainty as well. So that's a picture of what it looks like to just flip the ramp. And honestly, if it was just as simple as converting the, the non-recurring funds into recurring funds for the timeframe we have to do it, it would be easy. If it was just that simple, it would, it would, it would be a bit silly to know what the expenses were going to be, even if the expenses and revenues were not level, because that would be unrealistic. But even just knowing what they would be, we could plan accordingly over three years, it would be relatively simple. The issue is, you don't know the certainty, what the revenue and expenses would be. What we do know is that there would be increases in non-discretionary expenses. So the picture on the other side is talking about the bridges. The bridge is the dotted line around the corners, and that's where whatever happens with our revenues and expenses and the net additional expense, we have to bridge to that. And the unknowns around that, I think, are what make everyone involved, you know, apprehensive on the city side and on our side as well. So that's the part, that's where the work really happens. Because ju- just flipping from non-recurring to recurring revenues in and of itself, it wouldn't be that complicated when we have this many years to work that out. It's all the other variables that we don't know that make this complicated. So before we, we're getting closer to the question, to the, you know, discussion theory, but the next thing I think is worth looking at is also a chart we've seen before. Diagram of the compounding debt and local ability to pay formula, so it shows you what the LCI formula is made of. And I wanted to include this, you've seen it before in work sessions in the past, but it's important to note that yes, revenues are part of it, your local revenues are part of it, but it is the local true value of property, not the property tax rate that has any bearing on the LCI. So whether a locality chooses to over or under tax its, its real estate has no bearing on the LCI and therefore on our state revenue. So that's just something important to understand. Everything is moving relatively speaking, all the parts are moving relatively to every other locality in the Commonwealth, but it's, it's not the actual tax rates that value the property. And that value does not determine solely the assessments either. It's, it has to be the actual sales value, market value, seems like that plays that. I see what looked like some basic questions to all the
Basically, the state already knows what our value of the property is. And we're just, we're being, well, we're being funded on the route that they know our tax values, I mean, our property values are, even though we're not getting the full assessed value and/or the full sales price value in our tax rate. It's a rate, however it's set by locality, has something to bear on the other side. It's about the values, and it's, and it's just important to point out, and I, I don't want to go beyond our depth here, but it is, it is not, it's definitely not just the taxes as value, so the problem is the tax rate's not controlled with it. And the assessed value may play into it a little bit, but they do not just take the values from the local assessors people. That is definitely not, the market value plays in. So we, you know, we in Charlottesville, I've traveled in the last round of class, a lot of examples, properties that have sold very well are usually assessed on price.
So those, those things are, and there's actually
So is that worth that stuff?
Yes, yes. So one of the things that has come out in different analysis of the LCI, there are things in LCI that's complicated. There are things that work to Charlottesville's advantage. But one thing that catches every locality is that if you have just a few very expensive properties, those relatively few properties can have a huge impact. And that was in a study, a DMO, I believe, a DMO report, I saw something about that, and I was scanning just to make sure that I was sharing the right information of that, that exact item, just kind of figured out that type of phenomenon that's happening. LCI is complicated, but the main thing, the city no tax rate is not effective.
Now, they got the information after the person, like a lot to me, that was a really important thing.
And I called Mrs. Hamel after this to make sure she, she had already got that question from elsewhere in the city about it, and she'd come to the same conclusion of it. So we've already talked about that, so I feel certain she also, she was going to be answering that question as well, sharing the same information I'm sharing with you.
To, to prompt those.
Yes. Well, the question came from, I don't know whether it came from an elected, but it came from this woman, who's someone else in finance who was elected, she was one of the women as well, it's funny. So we could share that with council, we can, we can keep this in our, we can keep this rolling in our slide deck. It's good information to understand. And then the next slide is also related to the LCI, because this is, this shows you the relative impact or weight to those factors has at the formula. And the most important factor that has the biggest, the biggest driver on the set is the ADM. So one thing that is unquestionable is that higher middle school enrollment numbers would boost our state revenue. They, that definitely is for the state. So that's just a thing, like, I feel like at this point, mentioned, as the last we talked about, the fact that the students who come in from out of our locality would increase our LCI by, by about a million dollars in here. So that, so it's like, because the tuition was dropped in the past, it's at the, at the ADM's value, just like the average family. It's one of the reasons for the non-resident programs, but beyond that, if we didn't have that attrition trend at Walker and Eber, that's going to increase our state revenue.
Right, and I mean, that's, any year, yeah. I mean, we had a lot more of our students in our building, that would be very helpful.
Yes, absolutely. And yeah, that, that's an analysis we, we, they deepened in the past as, as Mr. Keever referenced, and she, she had the numbers right off the top of her head the last time we ran the impact of this non-resident over a million dollars in additional state revenue. And my other point is I have not actually thought about reconfiguration in the context of the ADM and then subsequently the, the impact it could have in our state revenue. So, and, and that goes directly to our local support. Right, it's, it's, it's additional revenue, and it's, it's an important part. I mean, granted, the local support is defining for our programs, but state support is not, it's, it's, it's a big factor for state revenue. Yes, yes. So
This is the year that, that we'll realize the new LCI.
Yes, um, thank you. That was actually on the slide I forgot to cover. I'm so, I'm so used to looking up the top, if you all, I'm not going to do a great job of following our insights. But below the slide where it shows you the formula, the equation to the formula, there's a note that, yes, and y'all always hold our breath for this, I'm looking at Renee, because we have no idea how everyone else really moves relative to us. We may sometimes get a three D, three D amount in their annual stare, because they can get their hands on all the data, say, by direct as well, there's a good job of that. We will get that update, you know, November-ish, late October, early, it's probably about early November. So that will be a very important moment for us in the process, but actually leads nicely into the next slide, which is talking about all the different puzzle pieces that have to come together to develop a budget in any given year, and this year's certainly no different. So let's just go through really quickly, and this slide also refreshes us on the timing of when this information becomes known to us as we go through the process. So our enrollment projections and stacking recommendations base solely on enrollment. We can do that in the October, November timeframe as soon as that September 30th enrollment is finalized. And I know I have it up in the agenda, but I don't think it's for October, because that first, October is a little trick to turn it around. We're still working on our numbers sometimes in the first part of October. But by November, you'll, you'll have that. So that's the first piece of the puzzle, if you will, to sort of get our hands around and do that work. Stakeholder input, we focus on that from November to January. And then the state budget, we don't have even a inkling of that really until the governor's budget is released, but right at the beginning of winter break, y'all just enjoy, it's been better than winter break. And, but that governor's budget isn't the final word, because as you all know, there are multiple other versions that come out until we get the final, hopefully usually around March, we get the final from the General Assembly. And from the state budget, we're looking at, you know, our state revenues, again, we remember notes about a new LCI will be in effect for fiscal year 2023. The VRS rate is another important factor we're looking for around that term. The raise rate, and what I mean by the raise rate is whatever the state puts out as this is the raise we would like you to give, and this is the raise we're quote funding based on the LCI, we won't get into that. But it, that's an important number to realize because, or to be aware of, because that's the standard everybody tries to rise to. You can expect everyone, every other school there's a problem to meet that rate. Just one, the state competitive, the staff has already challenged us enough. But two, you have to give that raise if you don't get those state values. I'm trying to think if they've ever permeated it, and I don't think they have, or could fall short of whatever rate they publish as the rate that they're looking upon on their side for raise. Let's think of the facts of that. Yes, so we get to count our step. So if the state says 3%, for example, we do a step plus a point, 1.75, because one and a quarter is our step, and then the 1.75 gets us to the first. So that's how we handle that, and we qualify for the full allocation from the state in a 3% scenario, for example. So, but what's interesting, and the reason I picked the graphic on this chart is this puzzle. A lot of times, at least more recently, you know, if we do all of our work and then we inform the city what we need to fill in that hole, if their piece doesn't end up fitting, it's, it's really challenging. We have to go back and rework a lot of our pieces. And because the local funding is so key, it's really great if we can somehow work, knowing what, having some idea of what that central piece will be, and then we build out around that, it's an easier process than it's always possible, but it's, it's deep from a process standpoint that I do have for the truly at the center piece. So that takes me to this next slide, which I don't, again, this is a graphic depiction of where my head goes when I was thinking about just these dynamics of the budget process. So the challenge that we face is before the charge, the superintendent board, us as staff, we're charged with development of a need-based balanced budget. And anybody who ever does budgeting work, either personally or professionally, knows there's a fundamental angst or contradiction or, or contradiction in those terms. Because, you know, we can need a lot of things, you know, especially when you're serving children, right? So there are a lot of needs, but there are limited resources, and that's the fundamental challenge of any budget process. And so the fact that the need-based piece and the balance piece of the budget are kind of fundamentally or inherently pulling against each other, that, if you, if you allow that to happen, it's not an effective process for, for dealing with the ramps and the bridges that you've got to figure out going forward to handle the, the non-recurring funds effectively and work those out of our budget over time. What we have to have is sort of a process of where the needs and the balance and act part of it are pulling against each other. We've really got to have that more circular process somewhat iterative, but the problem is you can't have that iteration effectively at the last minute. You know, if you're trying to work back and forth because a number's been thrown over the wall, it's just not going to, it's going to really cause a lot of trauma and drama, and then the folks, the council have been kind of late in the process, okay, these are the effects, this is what we're going to have to do, this, this, and this, kind of thing. If that's all happening at the 12th hour, so to speak, or that's not good for any of us, it's not good for the city. So the communication, and it's, it's a little tricky, but communication really is key to, to pull off a need-based balanced budget in the best way that we can, considering the entire community. Communication early and often, and clear signaling helps. And I feel like the council's been sending some signals, and I think that we need to start engaging in some conversation around those signals just to make sure that, again, that there's some common understanding and that we are able to work through this budget process together in the best way possible. So with that, the next slide is simply just a reminder of the priorities that drove the FY22 budget development. And I just, again, some of this is just information I wanted you to have for ready reference as we move into the discussion part of the agenda. And the next slide has a half dozen questions that are, that are intended to help prompt the discussion this evening. I don't think they have any more, maybe better questions than what Renee and I thought of. But before we get into the questions, I did want to point out one other thing that's in the presentation. And if they're following the home, but they'd like to go to the appendix. In the appendix is the FY22 budget change sheet, so you'll have that readily available. The first section, in the first section, I highlight the salary actions and the non-discretionary contracts. It's kind of good that saying, this 3.3 million, almost 3.4 million, these are really the priority items to get out. It's kind of good that saying, this 3.3 million, almost 3.4 million, these are really the priority items to get out of non-recurring funding and over into recurring funding. There's just not much or any discretion to be had with those items at this point. The next section in the appendix is to be page two in the appendix section where it has the $1,854,119,000. That is the school-based programs, supports and improvements. It's always where our focus is, as it should be as far as changes outside of taking care of staffing and the non-discretionary costs. And I did attempt to go ahead on the side there. I went ahead and broke it down for you so you could see how much of that was technology, which those are assumed. Honestly, now I can't imagine living about it. Because it's, it's been a real efficiency gain to not have to travel around town. Sometimes it's just so much easier to have things without the travel times, you know, so in a 10 square mile city. But you've got the tech piece, you've got the FTE piece and the money for that, and then the stipends and contract adjustments. And then the last part is a mix. And my note in this one highlights some expenses are COVID-specific or non-recurring. And what I, and I want to go ahead and highlight those, like the book room, for example. We don't, it's need to invest in book rooms that much every year. I would consider that a non-recurring expense, 160,000. Not to say that something else might not come up, but the K12 science supplies, that may be recurring. Because I do know that's very material intensive and we've been struggling to keep up with that one. I believe the content squad cycle was somewhat specific to our situation while we're doing virtual and learning models. But that's something that when the time comes back, we can speak more to that, but not tonight. But I'm just saying, there's some things in here that may not be recurring. And the legal insurance, maintenance and repair. I think at least some of that does have to be, and there's funding increased, there's quite a bit of maintenance. The blessing is a very robust orphanage and band programs. There's a lot of insurance to maintain. And we had a sharp drop off in rental, rentals, if you recall, but children's school suits still needed their insurance. And so the rental fees that we're paying for those maintenance costs weren't available to sustain, rental fees weren't available to sustain the full cost of maintenance. Anyway, the last slide, and it then simply summarizes the rest of the COVID mitigation supplies. I look forward to the day where we don't need. That, I can tell you, I checked with Renee. We've spent about $45,000, about $100,000 so far this year. But that will not continue when we no longer have the COVID virus to deal with in the same way we're having to deal with now. And we always look at our staffing adjustments based on enrollment and continue to do so. And then you can see the revenue. And we did have 391,000 in additional, net additional state revenue for the FY22 budget. That's why even though our budget increases by 4.9 million to 4.5 that everyone's talking about, which I'm very aware of, that's where that number is on the change sheet, that 4.571,000. Now, that number does not include the transportation increase, which takes us to 4.9 million, and that's down in the blue. So with that, I hope that was some helpful background, grounding information before we launch into the real purpose of tonight's discussion. So I want to go through the questions really quickly, and then I'm happy to sit down and just figure one. I'll be happy to get into it if I can. Sure. Oh, absolutely. So first question that May and I have is priorities. And I'm sure Dr. Burley will leave this, you know, what priorities does the board want to establish for the FY2023 budget development? So looking at what the priorities were that drove FY2, what changes, the peaks we need there. So priorities and then process. This is a big question. How does the board want to approach programs in the FY23 budget development in relation to funding from the city ownership? And then the next few questions are really more about, more about the city and the information we need to, to get through, communicating with them. What is the commitment and timing for the 5% tax increase for school operation? What is there, what is the level of commitment to that, and what are they looking to start signing? You know, that's the funding to flip the ramp, if you will, from that ramp side. But is it a given? And will it be phased? You know, those are, those are questions that are going to be 5 cents all at one time. You know, that, a lot of questions there. And if the city funds the 4.5 million that's in our current budget for real estate tax increase, what do we want to do with our cares and our funding to spend that out? And again, it's non-recurring, so ideally we would identify non-recurring options and projects to spend that money. And then last but not least, in general, what is the city revenue and expense outlook? How soon can CCS expect a preliminary increase estimate? I will tell you the way to score. Leslie Beauregard, who sends me an email and say, here's what the 40% of the properties are, and that was up Charlotte. That hasn't happened since the past, it seems like a long time ago, I guess it's been a couple of years maybe, but we just haven't had that starting point. And that used to happen October, November-ish timeframe. And that was just, you know, we didn't even necessarily share that number with you early on in the process with the board because, again, your chart primarily is developing a need-based budget. And so we didn't want, you know, we just kind of start there as a, as a starting point. But a lot has changed, which leads to the next question. Are changes being considered as a baseline for this number? Because I believe I've heard some comments about that. I don't know, I don't know what that means. And so these are discussions that are big discussions that make. And so those are the, I'm happy to say that I was just going to, you know, right. Thank you for the, for putting together.